Evening, I'm Pat Gales and I'm the Chairperson of the Historical Commission. It is January 11th. This is a hybrid meeting and it is being recorded and it will be shown on YouTube, Dayton's YouTube channel. Since it's hybrid tonight and we have six people here, one person on Zoom, we will be voting, doing roll call votes. Okay, let's check to see who's present tonight. I'm here, Pat Gales.
Oh, PM Nickerson, sorry.
Pat Olson.
Bill Pruitt, Rafa Jelton.
And on Zoom we have John Moore. Okay. Thank you. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Don't confuse me.
Don't confuse me, that's why I saw the pile. Jeff, we're gonna do the Secretary's Report and then you're next on the agenda, okay?
Okay, sounds good to me, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Did everyone receive the minutes of December 14th, 2021? I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of December 14th.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Pat. Okay, we'll have to have a roll call vote. Pam?
I'm in favor, yes.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I am also an aye. That motion passes. Next is a motion to accept the minutes of December 14th, 2021. There is one...
Time to...
Yeah, one amendment to make. It was adjourned at 8:25 PM at the bottom.
Yep.
After, okay. With that being said, as the amended minutes for the adjournment time, is there a motion to accept the minutes of December 14th, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Thank you. Okay. Next is the Dayton Trails Committee and tonight we have John Jeff Carvarlo joining us to talk about what's going on with their Trails Committee. So, there you go, Jeff.
Hi. So, thanks for having me tonight and I just, I guess I was invited to come to this meeting because I know we talked at the Special Town Meeting when we were, when we had that article on the warrant to get the money set aside to do the feasibility study to look at the trails on the east side of Dayton. So, for those not familiar, there's the Department of Conservation and Recreation is putting in a one-mile or a two-mile rail trail on the east side of Dayton. And what we're trying to do with the Dayton Trails Committee is look at options for tying that into, from the north end where that terminates now to the city of Taunton and on the north end, and then on the south end to continue that trail all the way south to the Somerset Line. Since, and then that went to vote at the Special Town Meeting and we got a, and we were able to secure the funding. Since then, we've actually been awarded a grant by TRSC, can't think of the acronym off the top of my head right now, but through Serphead for the, to fund that feasibility study. So, the great news is we're not gonna have to use the funding from the town, we're gonna be able to use the grant to do exactly what we were trying to do, the Trails Committee. So, at that town meeting in November, I think it was, Pat, it was you that approached me about coming in and talking to you guys, because as we, you know, as we look at what we want to do in the future, the DCR is very interested in making sure that all cognizant parties within the town are involved with, when they start rolling out design and start looking at options, when they're going along that existing rail trail. And, you know, as I'm sure you're well aware, there's quite a bit of history along that, we want to be able to maintain that. So, we want to make sure that this group is aware of that going on. At this time, they were, the DCR is well ahead of us, because we're still, we've been awarded the funding for the feasibility study and now tomorrow night, we're going to be officially accepted at the Board of Selectmen meeting. And then, and then we start the whole process of trying to put that out for bid. So, we're probably about a year away before we have a deliverable at this point. But, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, it has been awarded the design and engineering and they've actually come to the town of Dayton with a number of their potential candidates for doing that design, to do a walkthrough. They did that probably, I want to say October, this past October. So, they're going to circle back around, I'm gonna recommend that somebody from your Commission is involved in that next, next time we all meet together so we can, but, you know, a face to the name, so when they start talking details, we can make sure we keep your, keep your group and your concerns, you know, at the forefront. That's the gist, I think.
Right. That's pretty awesome, congratulations on getting that grant, that's really cool. We love grants. When I approached you, Jeff, the thing is, I wanted to make sure that as you were going forward, as that trail was going forward, that the history along the river was kind of noted somehow. So, we certainly can work on that in far as, you know, some of the spots, because there's like the first town, the first landing, the first town landing, which is approximately where Gardner's Tire is. And then, of course, all the way down the river, there's different spots of history that are important to the town. So, thank you for thinking of, to include us in that whole process. I don't know, it may be helpful for us to just start brainstorming what's on the river, what's important about the river historically, so that we're prepared for anything that comes up, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you, I was just gonna recommend, I was gonna ask if there's any way you can pull something together, where you had like a bolted list, where you know, you know, at this time, these are the milestones, not the milestones, but the locations that we definitely want to highlight when they're going along. And, you know, it would be great if, you know, and we're not, we're gonna definitely suggest things to the DCR, but they have to make the final call, but they're gonna be likely coming to us and asking about wayfinding and, you know, information boards or things like, that you see in other parts of the Taunton River Trail work, you know, throughout the area, where you will come across a information, everything here, information panel where somebody can walk up and they can learn about a particular area, there can be some kind of a vignette setup, just like they have in Fall River, with a bunch of old rail, railroad tracks, and it has a story behind that, and somebody can sit down, there's a bench there, you can sit there. So, there's so many possibilities and, you know, having your group already set up and kind of having an idea of what's in that area is a good resource that we'd like to make sure that they're aware of, and then we want to know that, you know, if you guys have some kind of a list, and when they come around, it'll be a ready, ready, ready deliverable to them, so they can know what we're concerned about, what we're, want to make sure they don't miss. Got my notebook, alright. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so if you just keep us in the loop, we'll start working on that list. I think it's a really exciting project, having grown up in town and along the water, you know, it's amazing what's, you know, how the river's improved, how the whole area has just improved. So, I'm really excited for you and for Dayton, this is great. Does anyone have any questions for Jeff? You said it's about a year, you said it's about a year out, Jeff?
It's a year out, yeah. Sorry, yeah, so it's a year out from my, I'm assuming at this point, once we get the process started, I gotta talk to Mike Mullin to see what the normal timeframe is for that, those kinds of procurement things. It's $40,000, I don't know what the procurement thresholds are in the town of Dayton, I've never done anything at the town level, this kind of services, I'm assuming it's some kind of a delivery order or something like that, that we'll have to do through the town. So, there is a selection process and likely we'll have to get a few bidders and everything go through that. So, I'm assuming in 12 months from now, we will have a feasibility study in hand, that's just the Dayton Trails Committee. The Department of Conservation and Recreation is working under a different timetable, they were trying to get somebody on contract to do the design and engineering in January, and as of October, they were still doing the walkthrough, so we're kind of, actually, I think that was in 2021, January 2021, they wanted to put somebody on contract and they were like a full 10 months behind, these things, they take a long time. So, I don't have a really good idea of when we're expecting DCR to come back with a design. I know when they were here in October, they said it's probably, they were probably about a year out to having a design in hand, so maybe they're looking to try to finalize a design by fall of 2022, but I'm hoping they circle back at some point here, because they wanted to come back and talk to the cognizant parties in the town of Dayton. So, we'll, we can ping on them again in about a month or so to see if they have any idea when they want to do that.
Okay, cool. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Jeff, thank you so much, and, you know, we'll start working on our end and just keep us in the loop and I'll be in touch.
Will do, thank you, I'll send an email just to let you know, but, thank you, oh, thank you for having me, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night. Bye.
It is cool. Does anyone want to work on the list of historical milestones on the river?
What river are we talking about?
Taunton River, yeah.
What area exactly where?
Just talking about...
From Taunton to the...
From Taunton to Somerset, so it's the whole thing, yeah, yeah.
Is it mostly the rail portion, or is it the river portion?
The rail would be the walkway.
Okay, so like you don't care about when we had part of the Sonnet Neck, you don't care about the leper colony, you don't care about those things?
No, as long as it's along the rail, you know.
Our side.
Our side, yeah, yeah.
Lepre colony?
I know.
Honest to God, Bill, honest to God.
I had no idea until we were doing the books, Myrna, Pat, I think Ken was there, and looking through the books, I don't think I was very helpful, because you all know the history, but I said the same thing, we had a leper colony?
On this side of the river or on the...
No, but we owned land on the other side of the river.
Right, right.
So, it was the Sonnet, but at the time, it was physically in the Sonnet, but it was Dayton.
Really?
And we sent these four people, you know, down the river, so.
But it's not part of the Sonnet.
Where the...
It is now part of the Sonnet.
Where the park is now, right, the Dayton Rock Park, in that area, there was a leper colony, I think I heard that.
Yeah, so, something to research.
But you're not interested in that, you're more interested in...
What's along...
Along the rail from Taunton to Somerset.
Right, right.
What is the, I mean, he did mention a grant, do you have any more detail, do you know any more about this grant? I mean, I understand the CPC and when he requested money for something.
No, but that should have been a question for him.
Right, he gave us that back, he said, he gave that money back because Serphead came through with the grant money.
Well, CPC never gave him any money, but he got through the town.
Yes, I don't, that was a question, that's a question for Jeff, I have no idea, you know, where the grant funding came from.
I don't care either.
Yeah, so, but they had...
Anyway, that was, I do know what the grant was, so I didn't really need to ask him any questions about...
Yeah, but it's not, yeah.
The grant he was looking, he wasn't looking for a grant, he was just looking for money to fund an engineering study.
Right, a feasibility study. So, they got the money, they... Correct, Ken, wait a minute, it's on the agenda for tomorrow night's Board of Selectmen meeting.
That's correct.
The Trails Committee got a grant.
Yes.
Not CPC money, but a separate grant.
Right, and tomorrow...
It wasn't a grant.
I want Ken to answer this for us. It was money that was... Bill, hold on, hold on.
Excuse me, can I talk?
No, no, I want Ken to answer the question first, Ken?
Yeah, so tomorrow night, we're gonna be taking a vote to approve the grant from the state, and I anticipated passing, this was at the Special Town Meeting, we voted, the town residents approved $40,000, I think it was $40,000, for the feasibility study, we no longer need to use that money, it'll go into free cash, and will now use the grant, and Mike Mullin is our procurement officer, and he'll be involved with the...
Okay, great, Jeff.
You can, I understand, I'll just reiterate to you, so we're on the same page, that the town did vote to allocate the money for his engineering study, but he since, he got a grant, so he doesn't need the town money anymore. Okay.
Correct, very good, thank you.
Grant is our money anyways, state grant is state money.
Yeah, right. So, all right, so the question is, does anyone want to work on brainstorming that list of spots?
I have to be, I have to check out, do a little survey, maybe Pam and I can go towards...
Good at surveying.
A river cruise or something, champagne.
Isn't it like right along the railroad goes, I've driven by with Pat, that's like it, isn't it the one along with Lincoln Ave?
No, there's a real, no, no.
I don't know where I am.
It goes...
Taunton River.
Then back here.
Okay.
Goes all along the river, through the Aggie School, keeps going, goes in back of...
Sweet Knoll.
Sweet Knoll, Gardner's Tire.
Okay, I'm on the wrong side.
Back, it's like in back of 1712, then it kind of like crosses Old Somerset Ave, goes in back of houses on Pleasant Street.
Okay, okay, I was on the wrong.
Doesn't cross Somerset Ave?
Old Somerset Ave, excuse me, Old Somerset Ave, back of, in back of Georgio's or 1712, there was a railroad crossing.
Of course, you gotta keep in mind, because I've given talks on that line, you know, so I know something about the line between Somerset.
Would you like to work on the list of sites? Would you like to work on the list of sites that are historical in nature?
Especially the rail.
On, along the railroad there?
We have to find those site, well...
First of all, let me just back up a second, they're a long way from instituting a bike trail.
Granted.
I think people have no idea, for one thing, they don't own the right of way.
Granted.
And, when they get to TMLP, when that line gets to TMLP, goes through TMLP property on its way to Ware Junction down the way. So, and that's all owned by TMLP, so they would have to purchase that or...
Those are things that...
Right, I'm just saying...
That they're, my question is to us tonight is...
Before the horse on this?
Yeah, no, I don't think so, because it also will help in identifying historical areas in Dayton. Does anyone like to work on identifying what's along that rail trail that could possibly be like historical markers or informational panels to share?
You know, I'll help, I just, as you know, now have a visual, and when you walk that new sidewalk at Aggie and you look down, you can see that rail and, it's, you know, amazing, obviously.
I walked the whole thing from Somerset, all the way to Ware Junction, many times, so I know it, I know every inch of it.
Well, you can't always get through without a machete, I wouldn't...
There is, there is some interesting, there's where the, there's a pool there, like a vernal pool. Go and, if you go into that little state park, I forget what they call that.
Sweet Knoll.
The one that has the ranch houses.
Sweet Knoll, yeah.
Sweet Knolls, that's a nice little park. But if you go down the rail trail from there, because it crosses when you walk in, there is a railroad bridge that goes over a current that goes from this, like a big vernal pool, it has a name, and it's part of that, that river system, that little river system that goes through Dayton. And that's picturesque, there's probably a lot of little spots along the rail trail.
Right, Sweet Knolls itself has a lot of significant history.
And of course, the rail trail goes through there.
Right, so...
But not through the center of the park, it's more closer to Somerset Avenue, so...
Yeah. Would we gather that info from, how would we gather that info?
Bill's already, you've done a copy of it?
Oh, I've wanted, yeah, well...
Do you have a copy of it, is there anything we could look at that you've already, why you could get?
Yeah, he's already done it.
I know, I know a publication that's already been written, years ago, before the current effort to put in a rail trail, there was an earlier effort, like 15 years ago, and I have a copy of that, a PDF of it, and it was done by a volunteer, like a college group, and they identify a lot of the interesting spots on...
Could you, it is a PDF, and you, could you share that with us?
Sure.
All right.
Because you're right, why?
Why reinvent the wheel?
All right, so, share that with us and we can review it and look at it for February.
I think you'll find it very interesting.
So, the PDF, what is the PDF trail, it's got a title?
It's a proposal, it's the first proposal for that rail trail prior to, and then it, funding.
Okay, well, if you could share that with us and that'll give us a basis for discussion, thank you. All right, moving on. The budget. Right now, our balance is $725.50 with $300 committed to the overlay map project, so that gives us an expendable amount of $425.50. So, I was kind of like looking at where we stand since we're in January already and we're going to be talking about next year's budget. The James Briggs plaque, we are estimating $49, I didn't know if that included some shipping or if there were some other expenses to that. And then the firecracker festival of $200 to $250, so we're spending our money. So, I don't know if anyone has any other estimated expenses that they can think of, but that's where we stand right now.
No, but you did, Pat, just a reminder, send that copy of all the classes coming up.
The classes?
The Zoom.
Oh, oh, those are all free.
Oh, I didn't look through it well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, those are from the Massacre Commission, those are free.
Are they on here anyway?
No.
Okay.
And you can get either the recorded version or go live, so...
So, we don't have any classes that we would pay for coming up then, I guess?
No, and like the conference last year, the one from Preservation Massachusetts, that's every other year, so, but there might be something out there, we'll just keep looking. Yeah, okay. So, I sent you the inform, is there any other questions about our budget for today? Budget?
What document, I'm looking at, there's a number of documents, right, relative to the, to the budget that you sent out?
Oh, that is to the FY23 budget, yeah.
I'm looking at the FY23 Historical Commission, that's the name of the...
Right, that's what we're moving on to, yeah. So, the budget requests have to be into the town administrator and the town accountant by January 31st, and they're asking for level funded budgets, again. So, we take a look at our budget, we have $1,000, we can either leave our line items the same, in equipment and repairs, we had zero, professional technical, we had 400, communications, we had 100, other supplies was 400, and travel was 100. We can either keep it that way, or I was thinking to reflect more accurate spending that we just balance out some of the line items differently. We did have some equipment and repairs, and we do have that cabinet now, so, and that looks, it's finished, I don't know if we own anything else, so I thought if we put $50 into that line item, that that might be more realistic. Professionally technical, because next year is like a non-Preservation Massachusetts Conference year, that we put like $250 into that, and that still gives us each $35 for a conference. Communications, we drop down to 50, because that's our mailings and stuff, and we're never going to spend $100 in mailings, I don't think. And we up our other supplies to 600, because that's where we're doing the bulk of our spending, when we're buying our plaques, you know, the things for the firecracker festival, that seems to be a more accurate area that we're, you know, where we're spending our money.
Is that including whatever you anticipate to do with the Aggie School?
That would include, yeah, yeah, any of our other expenses. And then travel would be, we never really used travel, so drop that down to 50, it's still $1,000, a level funded budget, but I think, you know, it's kind of more responsible budgeting, so, that's, does anyone have any other thoughts? All right, so, I will entertain, I just want to enter this into this paper, so we, because we have to sign this once we approve it.
I'm sorry, I'm almost thinking we put even a little more in supplies. Now we're talking, we need a plaque for Briggs, right?
What about, what about mailing to potential applicants for the historical marker? As part of the...
That was like... That was gonna be, she kept it at 50.
Yeah, so if we take travel and zero...
It's just what I'm thinking, just because those ideas at Aggie seem fluid, you had the idea with using perhaps one of the doors.
Yeah.
I don't know.
See, our, we can also, like go into negative on our line budgets, our line items, as long as we don't overspend the $1,000.
Right.
Is that correct, Ken?
Yep, I believe, yep.
Okay, so, we're fine with that?
Yep.
All right, so that would be 50, 250.
I think I messed it up. You moved...
Yeah.
Supplies you put to 600. 250 and 50. It's a little squishy, but I'm gonna have to take a picture anyway, yeah.
So, in fact, fiscal year '21, we only spent $288.88, right?
Right.
As actual expenditures.
Right, right.
Which is a long way.
But we're in FY22 right now.
Now, in Dayton, what is, has kind of what, April or something, it's not like, October 1st, like in the government, October 1st to the end of September.
So, they, July 1st starts the fiscal year.
Right, so that always threw me, because I'm so used to federal government is end of October, first of September is the beginning of the fiscal year in federal government, so, is that, is that something that most towns do, Ken?
All their towns, they go by the fiscal year, not the calendar year, July 1st to June 30th.
Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the budget of $1,000 with the line item changes as presented tonight. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, we'll do a roll call vote, Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. John, since you can't sign it, we have to sign the budget, but the majority is here to sign it, so for submission.
Sign it in spirit.
Sign it in spirit, says Rafa.
Yeah, I'll virtually sign it.
Why does this have to be signed by the members?
Because the town administrator and town accountant asked for it to be signed by the members, yes, by the majority of the members. Yes, by the majority of the members. Pat, if you don't mind. Let me date it. Yep. Thank you.
So much easier.
Okay. Unfinished business. The plaque for the James Briggs House. Gail was working on that and she has since resigned. So we need to contact awards plus to continue the project. Is there any, she had started and it was like at 49, she gave me the name and the number. Is there anyone that would like to take that on?
I can do that.
Thank you, Pam. The Segregance at School Inventory and Storage. The items from the Bowen House and the James Briggs House were moved to the school on December 17th. Ken and I were there and I added them to the inventory list. Also, Tom Ferry contacted us and asked, well, Ken and Ken asked me if we would be interested in the metal key for the Berkeley Bridge, which is in back, the back corner right there. This key, four men would take the key and it would use to turn the bridge.
If there was no, if there was a problem with the electrical system, right?
I don't know.
That is, no.
Is that true? Oh, good. I don't know, that bridge was so old, right? Did it have an electrical?
His brother, Bill Ferry, who was the bridge tender.
Yeah. Bill and Jim and Tom was too.
Sometimes the bridge would freeze though.
Right.
And you'd have, he said he had wants to swim to the shore. It must've been in the nicer weather.
So anyway, we have the key over there in the corner. Tom left it for us to take a look at. I didn't want to like tell him to, we had to have it because it's historical. So we'll be storing that at the Segregance at Schoolhouse. And I thought maybe if we could do some bridge history or something, we'll figure out some way to incorporate it somewhere.
Who's not interested?
It's an hour, it was, it's ours. It's ours, yeah.
Keep it secret. Nobody's recording.
Next one is Dayton Rock.
So anyway, I would like a motion to accept and store the Burke, the key for the Burke.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Rafa and Pam. Let's vote. Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Did I forget you on the budget?
You just didn't get to sign it.
Okay.
Yeah, we just.
And I am also an aye. Okay. Wonderful. And I'll write Tom a letter to let him know that we will keep the key. Key to the kingdom. So.
I can't wait to see it.
It's right there in the corner. So now, Pat, myself, Rafa and Pam, we decided that we were going to be the inventory committee for this, the stuff in the Segregance at Schoolhouse. We need to pick a date. Perhaps we can do that through email. Check your calendars and see when, when you're available.
When it's warmer too. When it's warmer.
Okay, all right. I'm going to make you do it tonight. So. The ornaments. Well, I found out, and this actually made sense, once I found out, they were originally sold by the Christmas Committee. Before it was, is the Christmas Committee like a town committee now, Ken?
It's the lighting committee, right? It's the.
Oh, yes.
Lighting.
So once upon a time, they were the Christmas Committee. And they had these, the Christmas ornaments made and that was their fundraising for the Christmas lights on, which now we do the lighting committee. So Sumideras is chairing that, Ken?
Yes, she is, yep.
Okay. So I need to reach out to Sumideras and the committee regarding those ornaments because they technically, I think, belong to them, not us. So.
So that money, the $5,000 something that was in the Segregance.
That's separate.
Gift. Okay, so that came from something else then?
That's separate, yep.
Okay.
The matter is getting the history and sorting it all out.
Okay.
So the social media, the Facebook, the board of selectmen approved our request for our Facebook page at their December 29th meeting. I sent you the social media policy that outlined, you know, how it works and the content. Rafa has agreed to be the administrator of our Facebook page. So I guess from what I read in the policy was like it should mirror some of the stuff that we have on the town website. So are we good with Rafa hosting? How do we want to do this?
Just avoid anything personal, period.
Right. But.
Personal stuff.
No personal stuff. Do we want, like it would have about the demolition delay by law, that historical marker program?
Our need for a member, well.
Well.
The agenda.
The agenda, our minutes.
Our accomplishments.
Our accomplishments.
A lot of information.
You're right.
Create files and upload them so for people to.
Rafa's good.
Right.
You know, like on the anniversary of some of our Boston Post Canes, on the anniversary. I mean, we missed it, but that's the stuff that belongs.
Because right now, all those photos that I took, they're in back in the day Dayton.
Yes.
But we could put them on our Facebook page. Okay, okay. You're good with that?
I'm good.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. All right.
I just have a friend request to Michael, so I can, I just cannot add anybody admin. He has to be like a friend first, so.
Oh, you figure out that technical stuff.
I bet you do that.
All right. Preservation planning. We got our invoice for Phase Two from Stacy Spies for $4,375. Again, since this is being paid with CPC funding, it needs to go to them for approval. So I'll entertain a motion to send the invoice for Phase Two to the CPC.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And we'll vote. Pam?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, so I will take care of that. Are they meeting January 20th, Bill?
They say they are.
Okay.
There's been a number of, she was, last meeting was canceled.
Okay.
And there was a meeting prior to that.
The November one?
Yeah. So the last one wasn't, was canceled and.
Okay. So what I'll do, Bill, is I'll CC you on the email when I send this to Tom, the chairperson.
Let me ask a question about this again. They have, this is, this would have been this, this one that you're talking about that we're, that we voted on is the second.
Phase Two, yes.
Right. And the first one, apparently, according to what I got from Tom, he has signed off on the first one.
Yes, that's all set.
And that he hadn't or something.
Yeah, it's all set.
Okay.
Yep. There was a lag there, so. There was a lag for some reason, but it's all taken care of.
Okay.
All right. I'm waiting to hear from the Mass Historical Commission so we can set up the Phase Two meeting review like we did with Phase One. So Phase Three has started and will continue through May 6th. And this is the bulk, the big bulk of the work. The products at the end of this phase will include draft inventory forms for the 94 properties and a list of resources that will be recommended that the National Register nomination. So I think that's really exciting, very exciting. Okay. Does anyone have any questions about where we stand on that grant?
My question is, are we any closer to learning how to do it ourselves when she's done with those 94 homes?
We'll have to study those.
She's not going to help with any instruction, like.
I'm going to ask her, yeah.
We need help just to fill out that Form B.
Right.
How do you shrink the map? How do you make it fit so everything?
My plan is to ask her, you know, for the details on that. I'm going to try it like with yours again and then say, is there, you know, an easier way to do this? So, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, one question on that is. So part of her job is to come up with that list. Her point of view, I mean, her expertise point of view, right?
We did the final list at the last meeting.
Right.
The list is finalized.
How many, do you remember how many houses were involved?
94 properties, 94 houses.
So when, does that come from, do we review that?
The list is done. We reviewed the list last meeting.
I didn't remember personally reviewing it. Was I supposed to have?
Yeah, and you sat and you voted for approval of it.
Yeah, but we didn't review it. Didn't go through every house.
Yes, we had like Milk Street, adding Ken's house.
File with addresses.
Okay.
Reed Darling staying out.
The only issue that came up that. Wait a minute, no. Does she issue any, sorry?
We reviewed the final, the preliminary survey list. We reviewed it.
All right, fine. I understand that. Now, but I'm going back a bit prior to.
Yes, but I don't understand why.
Well, because it, well, when you're, when you, you have to have some criteria. Now, she must've had some criteria, correct?
We set the criteria before.
So she knew.
We had, no, we worked on that criteria.
Yeah, I don't remember working on that. Did you have a, did you have a subcommittee doing that that I was not aware of? I didn't go over the list of houses.
Any, any information on the criteria and all of that has been sent to you. You've had the information. We sat at the meetings, we reviewed it, we discussed it and voted on it.
Quickly, can we just slightly review that criteria?
It's a done deal. The ship has sailed.
What?
The ship has sailed. She is, we hired somebody who's a professional in her field.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at.
We gave all the.
It's already, it's too late. We can't go change it.
Or did, where was our input into?
She brought some, she brought some homes.
She wasn't Zoomed, do you remember?
That we didn't agree on. And we discussed them.
At the last meeting.
Remember?
Yes.
I remember it, but I don't.
She brought up some things. She wanted to cluster them all together.
Right.
She wasn't going to put Milk Street, the Milk Street home on there. And we discussed what we wanted. So, yes.
Everything is mentioned in the minutes, right?
Yes. But was that the correct way to do it though? To allow her, we didn't give her any guidance prior to her criteria making of the houses, correct?
Sure we did.
Yes, we did.
Is it in writing?
Yes.
So I must have a copy of that.
Yes.
So in other words, you put a list and here's what we like, here's the first cut that we're looking at. And then she reviewed that and came back.
And came back with her suggestions, yes.
And the, the Standish houses were one of the sticking points and so forth.
We talked about the Standish houses down there.
Okay, okay.
There's where we got rid of like Reed Darlin'.
So I missed this all together.
It's all right. It's, just review it, Bill. It's all there.
I should have looked at that.
It's wordy. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot. 94 is a lot.
Go through all your documents because you have all of the documents.
Yeah. You sent this out, right?
Those are the minutes that I sent.
Oh, this was in the minutes, okay.
But print it out, Bill. Print it out. Don't try to just read it off your phone. Print it out. Print out everything.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Any news on any historical marker applications, Rafa?
Yeah. Karen Gannon, the one who lives on the Posen Street? Yeah. The last time I spoke here was December 2nd and we were deciding on a date for the ceremony. She said anything after Christmas would be great.
Okay. You want to reach out to her again and?
And Ms. Olson, when do you want your ceremony for your house?
I mentioned in the spring.
Spring, so that could be end of March 21st.
What I intend to do is to have a get together on the farm when there is no ice and when things are growing.
Oh, yeah. Good luck with that one.
Oh, no. The beauty of that place is the land, not the house. So I want things in the field. There's tulips that come up.
That was beautiful.
Talking Mother's Day Easter. So I'm thinking the reception at the farm will be Mother's Day Easter timeframe. So that's when I'm saying spring, that's what I mean.
Do you want Michael DeChico from the Taunton Daily Gazette to cover that?
No, because he'll probably have us living in Dartmouth. No, I really don't.
No, I mean, don't.
Two for two, come on. Oh, I do not.
Okay, okay.
No media.
No media. But the Facebook administrator. Yes, will, will do an accurate representation of what goes on.
Share it to all the Dayton pages.
And it'll be factual.
There you go. Okay. All right. Thank you, Rafa. Okay, our grant applications. It really should say FY23, but anyway, our FY23 survey and planning grant, as you know, the letter of intent, we were denied to enter into the, yeah, grant process. I'll just read the first paragraph. It just says, "At its December 8th, 2021 meeting, the Massachusetts Historical Commission reviewed your letter of intent for the fiscal year 2022 survey and planning grant funds. While MHC recognizes that your pre-application for the Dayton Communitywide Historic Property Survey Update Phase Two reflects a high priority preservation planning need, the MHC is unable to extend you an invitation to prepare a full application for this project in this grant round." They also, in the next paragraph, say, "Awards at the full application stage will be very, will also be very competitive. Given the continued high level of need across the state, it is typically not possible for MHC to fund back-to-back projects in an individual community. So this is not a reflection of the merits of your project or of your pre-application. We encourage you to consider other means to continue your survey update efforts in your near term. And would welcome seeing a letter of intent from the Dayton Historical Commission for this or a related project in a future grant round." So that's the denial. We knew it was a 50/50 shot.
We tried.
You know, we tried because what if?
By the next year.
By next year, exactly.
Why was it a 50/50?
Because they, they told us upfront that they don't do, typically, they don't typically do back-to-back awards to the same community. You know, but you never know.
It was a 50/50 though.
That's what I figured. That's my odds.
Well, maybe it was 60/40, but.
60/40. Either way, either way, we didn't get it.
But does that mean that, does that mean that Nick, if you, on alternate years, they would not crown on it?
Well, maybe 70/30.
Yeah.
Yeah. Depending on the merit of your, your application. So it was worth a shot.
Yep.
Because all they can say is no.
Good job and thank, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Your 50/50.
Well, thank you.
It's sort of like, it's sort of like when you, when I used to enter into art contests, local art contests, I'd enter some paintings or whatever. And it always seemed that the same person was winning. And it was a joke, you know, around the people, and it was always the president of the art.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of.
That would be discouraging to keep entering, Bill, but.
Yeah, right.
All right, so that leads to our CPC application we put in.
Well, as you know, it was taken under advisement.
Right, right. So my question is, what do we want to do? We don't have the ability to get, you know, the grant for the $12,500.
You'll have to ask the whole thing.
Ask for the whole thing. Continue on?
Yes.
Okay.
Phew.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I went back and forth. We'll go for the whole thing. Oh, no, we won't. You know, maybe we'll wait till next year.
Right.
You know, but we'll continue on right now, go through the process and see what happens.
You can do is present it to them and see how.
Exactly, exactly. So I'll probably ask to go to the January meeting too, to talk about that, so. All right. New business. At our last meeting, we got into a discussion about plans for the Segregance at Schoolhouse. So our goal, I've set our goals, and one of our goals is to complete a plan for the Segregance at Schoolhouse. And it involves reviewing the past efforts and plans, collaborating, collaborating with town departments, et cetera. We have submitted a request to the Capital Outlay Committee for the architectural designs and plans. What do we want to do? We want to form a small committee to work on this going forward and report back to us? It's our pleasure here.
I just want the money to fix a damn roof or whatever has to be done.
You're so.
Tons of money, right? Like almost a million dollars? What, to what? To de-lead.
Well, we have, they started de-letting.
Or it can't be that much.
There's, the problem, and we'll go back to this, the problem that happened with, when it went to town meeting before for CPC money, was that there was not an overall goal as to why you wanted to repair the Segregance at Schoolhouse. What was the purpose? What is your ultimate goal? And that was the question that came up in the audience. Am I correct, Ken? Are you remembering this right?
Yes, yeah, correct.
Okay. So, I mean, and sitting there myself, I was like, all right, so you're gonna put this money into de-letting. What's the next project and what is that gonna cost? Are you gonna keep coming back and what's, you know, ultimately, what are all the needs? That leads into the architectural plans and designs, money that we put into the Capital Outlay Committee too, because CPC funding could possibly be one of the funding sources for anything that's done there. So.
Okay.
And going forward, I think we should have a goal in mind. What do we want the function of that schoolhouse to be? What do we want it to look like as a historic building? What do we want it to do?
All right, I'm going to create a poll in all these Titan pages. The poll will ask the people of Titan, how would you like the Segregance Schoolhouse repurposed or reused? Please share some of your ideas.
Okay.
We'll incorporate these ideas into our proposal.
I think that's a good, a good start.
So the more.
Right.
Responses there, the better.
Right. I think that's a good start.
Well, what about other, other towns who have successfully, the Hornbines School was.
Not to always.
But that wasn't.
Paid money.
That wasn't, what is that, Swansea or Holbert?
Three Holbert, but.
Yeah. That wasn't property of Holbert though, was it?
I don't, I have a contact. I, I can reach out and ask them about.
Maybe they have some ideas.
Isn't it David, what's his face?
Yeah, David.
Remember the two sisters there too.
Isn't Kathy Potter, is that her name, Ken?
Video of the two.
That's her name, but it's, it's more Dave Downs.
Dave Downs?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's her.
Oh.
Dave Downs.
Dave Downs. I remember that name.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll reach out to, to those people and we'll go from there. All right. That's a start. Thank you, Rafa. Capital Outlay Meeting. We all received an email to attend the Capital Outlay Committee meeting on February 1st at 5:45. They'll be looking for our rationale and explanation for the documents that we put in for our historic preservation in the Segregance at Schoolhouse. Who is planning on, do we want to go? I guess is the first question. And who is planning on being there? I will go.
When is the meeting?
February 1st at 5:45. That's a Tuesday? I'll be there.
Here?
At prime time.
I haven't been to prime time. I might show up.
Oh, I think you should go. You're Vice Chair.
That's true. Okay, I'll show up.
Okay. I will. All right.
Is this anything to do with an official commission meeting? Requisite for commission members to be there?
This is where we can talk about the trail, right?
Are we gonna talk about what?
The plans for the trail.
No, we'll talk about our, the, the forms we put in, the request to the Capital Outlay Committee for our preservation, the $25,000 for the preservation and the $45,000 for the Segregance at Schoolhouse plans. If the majority, if four or more members go, I would post it as an official meeting because we'll all be in, in present, I'll be there.
And, and this Capital Outlay, is that a town function?
Yes, yes, that's. Ken, you want to explain about the Capital Outlay Committee?
Yeah, we formed this Capital Outlay Committee. Actually, it was formed a while ago, but it's really got activated recently. I'm the liaison person for the Board of Selectmen for the Capital Outlay Committee. We've been meeting and coming up with plans as to see what the future is for the town, what our, our expenses are gonna be. Different department heads have been invited to individual meetings in January and February to discuss their five-year plan and what the expenses are and as you look at the form is the way, where the money's gonna come from. So we just want to get a handle onto what the future is for the town of Titan as far as expenses go, so. I want to be there, obviously. Mike Mullins is part of that committee. Others are part of the, the town accountant. The town treasurer is part of that committee. Finance Committee has a member who's the chairperson of this committee. And we, we just invite everybody to come in. We may ask questions to each department head or individual members of that group so that we can have a plan for the, for the town, for our future.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so Rafa and I will plan on attending and anybody else is welcome. If you are planning, please let me know. So if I need to post it, I can. Sadly, we had another resignation. Gail Salve resigned as of on January 5th of 2022. The Board of Selectmen has to officially accept her resignation, which they will be doing so tomorrow night. But I would like to thank Gail for her efforts and her contributions to the commission. We will miss her.
Mm-hmm.
She'll be back.
She'll be back?